I'd like to call the June... Is this working? Yeah, it works. I'd like to call the June 17th Board of Education Workshop Regular Meeting Open. If we could, um, sorry. If we could have a moment of silence. Flags, a little?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The open public... The open public meeting acts in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. A public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, The Herald News, The Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, The County Superintendent's Office, The Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the Administrative Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Rule call, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Tovich.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Granino.
Mrs. Jurgensen.
Here.
Mr. Liffey.
Here.
Mrs. Markward.
Mrs. Rokano.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Here.
And Superintendent's Report, Dr. Kitchens.
Yes, so very excited to be here tonight with a few recognitions. We're going to start off with one that we received from the state. So this is a recognition of our Highlander Marching Band for winning the Group Four State Championship. And we received from the Senate and General Assembly, received this resolution, which I will read now. Whereas, the West Milford Highlander Marching Band, highly esteemed throughout the Garden State, won for the first time the Group Four New Jersey State Championship on October 26th, 2024. And whereas, the State and General Assembly of the State of New Jersey are pleased to recognize the West Milford Highlander Marching Band upon this felicitous occasion, which bears witness to the hard work and dedication of its members, who devoted countless hours of practice to earn this prestigious accolade. And whereas, under the superb leadership of band director Matthew Gramata, the West Milford Highlander Marching Band competed against many distinguished schools within the state, and its members' uncommon measure of creativity and determination resulted in their triumph in several categories, including best overall visuals, best overall effect, and best overall color guard. And whereas, New Jersey's young people who set their goals high, who preserve in their pursuit of those goal... Who persevere in their pursuit of those goals, and who reached their desired milestones and accomplishments, their objectives stand as an example and an inspiration to their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas, it is altogether fitting and proper for the members of this legislature to pause in their deliberations to acknowledge the accomplishments of the West Milford Highlander Marching Band, and praise the dedicated staff and students who contributed to its victory. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the State and General Assembly of the State of New Jersey that this legislature hereby congratulate the West Milford Highlander Marching Band and extends its sincerest best wishes for continued success and vigor in all of the years to come. And be it further resolved that a duly authenticated copy of this resolution, signed by the Senate President and Assembly Speaker, and attested by the Senate Secretary and Assembly Clerk, be transmitted to the West Milford Highlander Marching Band. Up next, I want to go through a little bit, as our community knows, we are excited here tonight to announce the appointment of two new elementary school principals, one for Upper Greenwood Lake and another for the Appshoa Elementary School. So I want to talk a little bit about what that hiring process looked like. So first of all, in conversation about what we were looking for in our next principal in each of those locations, we wanted to make sure we were including all voices. And I personally believe, and I know that my administrative colleagues share this viewpoint, that hiring for a principal is arguably one of the most important hires you can make in a district. And I think that the process for doing such is appropriate, that that be the most rigorous process we have, because every one of our schools that hire, that person is going to be the face of that school. And there's so many different people that that position reaches and touches, we wanted to include all of those individuals. So the first thing we did was we created a stakeholder survey, where we allowed people from each of those communities to share their perspective on what we are seeking for that position, and what strengths, you know, we're looking for, and what are the things we value most for that position. Using that data, we had about 150 responses to that survey, which was really great. Using that data, we tried to help drive our interview process. We had about 45 applicants in the pool, we pulled from the same pool for both positions. We screened, we did a first round screening interview for about 35 of those applicants, because, you know, a lot of times the resume of an individual doesn't tell the whole story. So we really wanted to make sure that we got our eyes on as many people as possible. So I should also recognize that our leadership group in this search was myself, Mr. Novak, Dr. Schwartz, who is stepping into our Director of Special Services role and vacating one of those principal roles, and then Principal Bill Kane, who is one of our veteran principals in that, in the elementary department, but also the leader of our administrative unit. So the four of us went through and did these screening interviews of 35 candidates, and were able to narrow it down to 15 candidates we brought back for a panel round interview. The panel round interview was three separate panels. There was a panel with parents from both communities that was led by Dr. Schwartz. There was a panel of staff members from both communities that was led by Mr. Novak. And there was a panel of fellow administrators and representation from the Board of Education that was led by me. All of our candidates went through a rigorous interview in each of those rooms, where they were asked the same questions as their fellow candidates, and the responses were scored by the individuals in that room. From there, we took those scores, and we determined who the top overall candidates were. So we were able to narrow that 15 down to six for a third round interview, which was with the four of us that took the lead on this position. During that process, we provided the candidates with three scenarios that we wanted them to go through, and they chose two of them to respond to. We also asked them about the third scenario when they were in that final round interview. And we asked some other questions as we went through to kind of get a feel for the candidate. Those were much more catered to the individual, and we used the data from the panel interview to help guide the questions that we asked in that final round. I believe wholeheartedly that all six of the people that made it to that final point after going through such a rigorous process would be great school administrators, but we wanted to find the ones that were best for our schools and for our community. And I really feel that we were able to do that through that process. You know, it was, it was a lot to ask of these people as they went through. And the two people that came out here this evening, I want to introduce to you at this time, starting with our Upper Greenwood Lake Principal, who is here this evening, Mr. Jay Alloy. And I think he's going to say...
I'll give him mine. Is there one there? Oh, you want to hold it, or do you want to stand? That's what I thought.
Hello? Is it on? You guys? Thank you. My name's Jay Alloy. I am really excited. Thank you for having me. First and foremost, I want to express my sincere gratitude to the Board of Education, Dr. Kitchens, Mr. Novak, for selecting me as the new principal of Upper Greenwood Lake Elementary School. Thank you for placing your trust in me, not just to do a good job, but to make UGL an even better school. I'm truly honored by your confidence and support. My connection to West Milford goes back many years. As a high school student, I played against West Milford in soccer, and always look forward to those competitive spirited games. That connection in the Alloy family continues today, as my son is now a high school student himself, and recently played against West Milford in lacrosse, although I have to admit the outcome was nothing close to what we were looking for. Your lacrosse team is very good. It was still a great experience and a reminder of the strong sense of community and sportsmanship that defines this community. I'd like to take one moment to introduce my family and thank them for supporting me on my educational journey. My wife, Jody, is my constant support and encouragement. My fabulous mother-in-law, Nana, is always there for all of us with her wisdom and kindness and great thoughts. I'm incredibly proud of my daughter, Gianna Marie, and my son, Joey, who inspire me every day. I truly couldn't do this without their love and support. I am genuinely excited, almost to the point of bursting. I really am. The opportunity to lead UGL and become a part of the West Milford community, I look forward to working with the dedicated staff, supportive families, and most importantly, the wonderful students, who create a welcoming and inspiring environment for everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I am so eager to get started and to work and make this a fantastic year. Have a fabulous night.
Thank you, Mr. Alloy. Now, our Appshoa Principal is unable to be here this evening. Short notice on the, on the timing, and also she is at a recognition for her own daughter at a board meeting in her home district. So, but the individual will be hiring for that role is Mrs. Leah Sinisi, and she's prepared a statement that Dr. Schwartz is going to read for us at this time.
So I'm thrilled to introduce Leah Sinisi to all of you through her letter, to the West Milford Board of Education and members of the school community. It is our, it is my incredible honor to be selected as the next principal of the Appshoa Elementary School and join a community where schools are truly at the heart of it all. Our children are our greatest gift and most lasting contribution to the future, and there is no responsibility more meaningful than helping families build the foundation that supports them for life. While I wish I could be here with you this evening, I am attending my daughter's high school awards ceremony, where she is being recognized for her achievements, a proud and memorable moment for our family. As both a parent and an educator, I believe deeply in celebrating every child's growth, and I bring that same commitment to my leadership. I look forward to becoming a dedicated member of the West Milford community and to leading Appshoa into a bright future, one where school, family, and community work together to ensure every child thrives.
So again, I just, I wanted to really go through what our process was, because I do think it's so important that we get the right people in these positions, because they're the, you know, they're the boots on the ground that really make sure our schools thrive. And I truly believe that the process that we put these individuals through, if they can get through what we put them through the past, past few weeks, then they can absolutely get through anything we're throwing at them at the school. So welcome aboard to both of you. Really, really excited to have you. You know, I know, I know Dr. Schwartz would not turn her, her school over to anybody that she didn't feel was going to do an outstanding job. So excited that, Leah, aboard. I believe she's going to try to come to our next board meeting so she can introduce herself, but I did want to prepare the statement this evening. And Mr. Alloy, thank you so much for being here this evening. Looking forward to working with you. Up next, we have our Student Representative Report from Megan Seidner. But before we do that, we would like to recognize Megan for the efforts that she put in all year this year. And to do that, Mrs. Lockwood is going to read a resolution.
I am. So, Ms. Seidner, thank you for everything that you have given to the board this year. And in recognition of that, I'm going to read the resolution. So, West Milford Township Board of Education Resolution Honoring Student Representative Megan Seidner for Service on the West Milford Township Board of Education. Whereas, Megan Seidner has served with distinction on the West Milford Township Board of Education. And whereas, through their leadership, the West Milford Board of Education has gained fresh insights into student concerns, student priorities, and what is on the mind of young people in the community. And whereas, they have further contributed to the community by serving as a valuable spokesperson, sharing the student perspective at board meetings. And whereas, Megan Seidner's exemplary commitment to fellow students and the school district has promoted clear communication between the board, district administration, and the student body. And whereas, Megan Seidner has maintained a professional decorum at board meetings, shown respect to board members, and strive to learn the proper etiquette of serving on a school board. And whereas, they have demonstrated a commitment to advancing the education of all students without neglecting their own responsibility to strive for success in the classroom. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the West Milford Board of Education recognizes Megan Seidner's dedication and commitment to advancing educational opportunity and open communication between the board, district administrators, and the student body. And be it further resolved that the members of the West Milford Township Board of Education extends their sincere appreciation to Megan Seidner for her dedicated service on the West Milford Township Board of Education. And be it further resolved that the members of the West Milford Township Board of Education extend their best wishes to Megan Seidner in all of their future endeavors. Megan, it is truly a pleasure to have you seated in that spot. You have done such a great job.
So Megan, you have really big, the person that follows you is going to have really big shoes to fill for the efforts that you put in. We also have a plaque for you here, and I'd love it if we could take a picture with the whole board here at this point. Dr. Schwartz, would you mind taking a quick picture for us? Members, why don't we come on back? Let's come back this way.
Can you join?
Truly.
Why don't you come on up, Ronnie?
This is yours too. I'm going to put it right over by you.
Sorry. You get to report on things now.
Good job, Kaya. Thank you so much. I'm going to miss your report, actually.
All right, Megan, and without further ado, why don't you put Mr. Novak in out of shame one last time?
If I may, a little per diemore?
It's higher than my reports in the future.
Wow, okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm very emotional, so I'll hope to get through this like steady, but if not, I apologize in advance. So, good evening. Here is a debrief on all things West Milford from late May to now. So, starting off, on May 21st, West Milford High School had the honor of hosting the Governor's Educator of the Year Breakfast and Presentation. This was a beautiful display of West Milford High School's abilities and great hospitality. The culinary classes prepared the fruits and the muffins for the teachers. The heroes and cool kids showed up bright in early to greet and escort the celebrated teachers. Our music department shined with their incredible performances, and works of student art were displayed around the school. Congratulations to all teachers across New Jersey for being recognized for the incredible efforts that they put forth each and every day. Know that these rewards, you will fully, fully earned. The West Milford High School War and Remembrance Day was held on May 22nd from 7:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the high school. This ceremony, with excellent student announcements from Enya Barrett and Lindsay Whitner, honored current service members and veterans, while also recognizing deceased service members and veterans. In the lower media center throughout the day, various veterans volunteered to share their stories. These sessions were informational and moving. They instilled a great sense of respect and appreciation for our servicemen and their sacrifices in all of us. Also, on May 22nd, the Science Honor Society inducted new members in the high school's lower media center. The society's advisor, Ms. V., was very welcoming and passionate, allowing for a smooth and enjoyable ceremony. Congratulations to all of our senior and junior members. We wish for your continued curiosity and passion in the world of science. Highlander Day was held on May 24th in the backfield. It was a beautiful, sunny day, and it was absolutely perfect to enjoy all of the wonderful tables each club and society had to offer. Face painting, temporary tattoos, ice cream, pretzels, burgers, water balloon tournaments, and a pay-to-pie a member of the Class of 2027 Student Council, only name a few of the amazing show of student creativity and excitement that was on display. The school ran on an early dismissal schedule that day at 7:18 a.m. to 12:19 p.m. with classes, and the event ran from 12:20 to 2:00 p.m. On May 28th, the English Honor Society inducted new members in the high school's auditorium. The society's advisor, Mr. Nikinas, was confident and witty, allowing for another excellent ceremony. Congratulations, senior and junior members, on this accomplishment. We hope that you continue to analyze, create, and perform various works of literature. On May 29th, starting at 5:00 p.m., the National Honor Society held a pickleball tournament in the high school gym. There were 36 participating duos that came from inside and outside of the high school. All the proceeds from sign-ups, along with proceeds from snack sale, pizza sale, and ribbon sale, allowed for the National Honor Society to raise $766. All of these proceeds go to head custodian Damian Fitzpatrick in order to help his daughter battle cancer. On behalf of the National Honor Society, thank you. Whether you spread the flyer, you played, you watched, or you bought goods, thank you so much for proving that coming together as a community truly does make a difference. GSA held a Pride Spirit Week. On Monday, June 2nd, we dressed as our favorite LGBTQIA+ icon. On Tuesday, June 3rd, we wore pink, white, and blue for Trans Awareness Day. On Wednesday, June 4th, we wore pajamas to be comfortable in our own skin. On Thursday, June 5th, we wore neon or tie dye to show our true colors and live loudly and proudly. And on Friday, June 6th, we wore rainbow or GSA shorts because it was Pride Day. In part, in preparation for senior prom to occur the following day, on June 3rd, West Milford High School, in partnership with West Milford Police, West Milford Fire Department, Paramedics, Hackensack Flight Medical, Atlantic Health, West Milford First Aid Squad, and Stickel Salt's Funeral Home, hosted a Driving Under the Influence reenactment. This was a greatly moving, intense, and incredibly well-coordinated event, featuring a recorded segment and then a live performance. The student actors of Laurel Space, Dylan Prezioci, Ally Gruber, and Sarah Rottenberg joined with the volunteer workers from all of the partner systems for this reenactment. The plot performed was that the friend group decides to participate in underage drinking and drug use before their senior prom, resulting in an under-the-influence driver who gets into an accident with teacher actor, Mr. Lambert. This crash results in the character played by Sarah Rottenberg to be pronounced dead, while the character who was driving, played by Laurel Space, is arrested. It was chilling. After this PSA, students were given wristbands that said "Above the Influence." This reenactment was performed for seniors and juniors, and the sophomores and freshmen received an assembly against driving while under the influence. On June 4th, West Milford High School's Guidance Department hosted the Community Scholarship Night in the high school's auditorium starting at 7:00 p.m. This evening was a celebration of our graduating seniors and the incredible generosity of the 41 local organizations, businesses, and families who sponsor these awards. Over $100,000 was awarded to the chosen seniors. Thank you so much to the hard work of the Guidance Department for putting this together, and to the truly moving willingness and kindness of the providing parties. Please know that you are directly funding the dreams and helping turn them into reality. The Class of 2025 is immensely grateful. The Senior Prom with the theme of Mystery at Midnight was held on June 5th. It was held in the gorgeous mansion of Mountain Lakes, and it was a very fun evening. Everyone looked absolutely stunning and had a wonderful time dancing, singing, eating, and taking pictures in the provided photo booth. Thank you, Senior Class Council, advisors, and administrators for putting this together. Seniors, in your email, you can find the link not only to the Laurel's photos, but to the high-definition digital copies of the photo booth pictures. The latter are also free, so please be sure to save the pictures of your smiling faces. On June 10th, TV Science held their final rec-assembly of the year. This featured not only the funny skits and amazing edits of our students' athleticism, but also a surprise. After threading the whole video through with a mock interview, Class of 2021 graduate and musical artist, Vinna Vaughn, the TV Science team, with the assistance of the theater crew, pulled up the screen to reveal Vinna Vaughn. He had been a key senior leading the rec-assemblies with the Class of 2025, was in freshman year, so having him come back and perform live was amazing, and it was a full-circle experience. Bravo, TV Science, for putting together such an excellent show. On June 13th, the Parent Teacher Student Organization held the senior celebration for the Class of 2025. From 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., there was free food such as sandwiches, chicken, pizza, cookies, ice cream, and cotton candy. There was also free entertainment from a caricaturist, a Henna artist, a tarot card reader, inflatable games, and a photo booth. From 9:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., there was also a hypnotist show. Ultimately, it was a great way for the Class of 2025 to be gathered and celebrate our high school careers. We appreciate all the efforts for it to run smoothly without even costing us participants. Now, we have a final exam schedule. Thursday, June 12th, has periods 1 and 4, having a morning and afternoon exam respectively. Friday, June 13th, has periods 2 and 5. Monday, June 15th, has periods 3 and 6. Tuesday, June 17th, has period 7 and 8. And Wednesday, June 18th, has makeups. Now for sports news. We are starting off with an incredible individual accomplishment. Senior Laurel Space is officially the PCCA Overall Female Student Athlete of the Year for 2025. She has been an essential player, teammate, and leader throughout her career on the basketball team, lacrosse team, and the track team. Congratulations, Laurel. Girls Outdoor Track. The girls did incredible this season. Most notably, Peyton Lowenstein earned an M of C by placing second in the javelin with throw of 115.6 at the NJSIAA Group 2 Championships on May 30th to 31st in South Plainfield. Then, Peyton Lowenstein placed 10th in the state in the javelin with a throw of 114.10 at the NJSIAA Meet of Champions on Wednesday, June 4th. Boys Outdoor Track. The boys also did amazing this season. Most notably, Lorenzo Andrade qualified for the M of C by earning a gold medal in the 400-meter hurdles with a time of 55. And Julien Pierre was fifth in the high jump at the Group 2 Event with an effort of 6.2 at the NJSIAA Group 2 Championships on May 30th through 31st. Additionally, Julien Pierre earned 13th in the high jump with an effort of 6.2, and Lorenzo Andrade earned 14th in the 400-meter hurdles with a time of 55.77. Baseball. Boys Baseball finished the season with a great final history of 16.10. Not only this, but they won the Big North Independence Division with an 8-2 mark. Additionally, they reached the semifinal round of the Passaic County Tournament and the quarterfinal round of the NJSIAA North Jersey Section 1 Group 2 Tournament. Congratulations, boys. Softball. Girls Softball finished their 2025 campaign with a final score of 5.14. They had a 3-5 mark in the Independence Division of the Big North Conference. They had positive morale and high-scoring games. Good work, girls. Boys Lacrosse. Boys Lacrosse finished their season with a final score of 8.13. For the fourth season in a row, the boys advanced to the Passaic County Tournament final. They may lost to Weyton Valley, but they played incredibly nonetheless. Well done. Girls Lacrosse. Girls Lacrosse ended their campaign with a final score of 1.15. Each member played their very hardest. Notably, goalie Ally Rocky ended the season with 117 saves. Good work, girls. Boys Volleyball. Boys Volleyball ended their season with a final score of 1.19. This team is led by three juniors as captains, Kevin Dockra, Andrew Newicki, and Anthony Pham. Boys, you played hard this season, and best of luck next year, captains. Boys Tennis. Boys Tennis ended their campaign with a final score of 7.10. Additionally, they had a 4-6 record in the Independence Division of the Big North Conference. Good work. Now for a very brief look into the future. On June 19th, the Sweet Senior Send-Off Breakfast will be held from 7:00 a.m. to 7:20 a.m. in the cafeteria before graduation practice begins. All seniors and high school staff are invited, so, seniors, I definitely recommend bringing along your tissues and your yearbooks to have one of your final conversations with the West Milford staff. Later that day, the Class of 2025 Commencement Ceremony will be held at McCormac Field starting at 6:45 p.m. Tickets allowing guests to attend will be distributed to students the morning of June 19th during graduation practice. There will be a reception for students and their loved ones after the ceremony in that field. Thank you very much, not only for listening to me tonight, but for offering me a seat at the table for the school year. It has been a complete privilege and an honor to not only update on West Milford High School, but to be able to listen to your conversations. Learning about the political, financial, and social workings of our school was absolutely invaluable to me, especially as I intend to pursue a career in the field of education. Thank you so much for this incredible experience.
Megan, thank you again, as always. And before I turn it over to Mr. Novak, I'm going to tell one quick story about Megan. So for those of you in the room who are not aware, although I think at this point most of you probably are, Megan is also our Class of 2025 valedictorian. Now, our valedictorian is announced at our distinguished scholars' night, and it's a surprise announcement that evening. So, Mr. Novak and I were on stage, and we're going through, and we see that she is going to be announced as the valedictorian. Because this is my first year in the district, and so I don't know all of the students, you know, I didn't grow up here, so Megan, you were one of the first students that I got a chance to... a chance to know, so when I saw that you were being named valedictorian, I was really very proud of you. And I thought to myself, well, you know, it's because Megan's one of the first students in the district that I got to know. And then I realized that it's really just the connection that you make with the people that you interact with, because then I turned, and Mr. Novak is like, "Did you see who won valedictorian?" And then I looked out to the board members in the audience, and they were crying. So, you know, Megan, we couldn't be prouder of you this year. You've done an amazing job. You're going to make a great teacher, and we really hope we see you back here in these halls someday in the future.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Novak is going to be honoring our retirees.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kitchen. Again, thank you, Megan. They say that there's some things in this world you should see before they're gone: Billy Joel, the Nepali Coast, and Megan Seidner and his student. So, you do a great job. Thank you. And mentioning that you are pursuing teaching as a profession, I think that's a great way to segue into who we're here to honor tonight, our staff. So, this is one of my, I guess, favorite moments of the year. The last four or five years, we've been inviting our retirees to come in and get acknowledged by the board in a public way. This is our best turnout for people who actually showed up for our coffee and cookies and plaques, so we truly appreciate you being here to help us celebrate all of you. Dr. Kitchen took a lot of my talking time, so I'm gonna move right along, and we'll start calling you up when I call your name. Please come up and accept your plaque, get your round of applause, and pose for a picture if you've got someone to take it. Nate, you'll be zooming in. All right. All right. First up, Robert Winston, Technology Supervisor, District Wide, twenty years of service. Tammy Talmage, Transportation Supervisor, District Wide, twenty-six years of service. Kathy Rita, Assistant Athletic Director. Secretary Athletics, High School, twenty-five years of service. Mary Ann Messino, Social Worker, District Wide, twenty-five years of service. John Hummer, Network Systems Engineer, District Wide, twenty-five years of service. Sue Nebiker, Media Specialist, High School, thirty-eight years of service. So, I didn't realize when I started in a role where I had to form committees that I enjoyed having people on committees who challenged me. I learned that lesson from our next retiree, that's Karen McCourt.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I'm still having all my committee emails. Debbie Gabriel, Secretary Guidance, High School, twenty-five years of service. So, when Macabean began applying for the School of Character Award, Rich DeGosse thought it was the School of Characters Award, and he signed right up. And here he is tonight, receiving his acknowledgement for his retirement. Star of Happy Gilmore 2, Mr. Thomas Antonucci. Rachel Phelps, Special Class Aide, Appshua School, fourteen years. This is the last teacher in the district who once had me in a classroom. Bruce, I've been honored all these years to not only have, you know, be in the role where I could try and tell you what to do, but you don't listen to me anyway, to have seen you have my children in your class, so it's very exciting for me tonight to honor you. Bruce Bialken, Social Studies Teacher, High School. This retiree is going to be very difficult to replace. If you've heard of On-Site Decision Day at the high school, this is something that Dana Lambert, this was her baby. There's so many kids in the West Milford schools over the years, and I don't even know, I know that predates my time here, which is a long time. I know there's a lot of kids in the West Milford schools who may not have gotten an acceptance to a school or a post-secondary opportunity if not for our On-Site Decision Day. It's the model for that program across the state and beyond. She's also involved in her national and state organization for counseling, and that is Dana Lambert, School Counselor, High School, thirty-six years. Regina Canale, Grade One, Marshall Hill School, twenty-three years. Sharon Barca, Special Class Aide, Macabean School, eighteen years. Maria Elena Grant, Special Class Aide, High School, seven years. Denise Podmokli, Cafeteria Aide, Paradise Knoll School and Vehicle Aide, Transportation, twenty-five years. Tracy Connolly Jones, School Bus Driver, Transportation, twenty-five years.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
One of the first custodians I met in the capacity of a building principal, Dean Monti, Head Custodian, High School, twenty-five years.
Thank you.
Not getting rid of me that easy. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. My buddy.
He also signed up for the School of Characters Committee. Jake Quarter, Head Custodian, Marshall Hill, thirty-one years. So, the next retiree, I had to swear to secrecy, as he is able to watch me fall off the boat launch annually when I try to put my boat in water, and that is Ed Olyria. I think he last watched me argue with my father on how to best put the boat in the water. I was wrong. And Thomas Gillon, I don't know who that is, so Tommy Wood, Maintenance Mechanic, Operations. That, I guess that concludes our retirees who are going to be announced at this point. I know Dr. Kitchen loves a good picture, so we're going to get, I guess we're going to have retirees come on up and pose for a photo, and then please help yourselves to coffee and cookies, take them for the road after we get a picture for everybody. Again, thank you for all that you do. Your contributions to the West Milford schools will never be forgotten. Truly appreciate it. So, again, thank you. Thank you to all of you.
Short people in the front.
I just, I just caught you with this.
Short people in the front.
Someone helped you, huh?
All right, can we get everybody together, please? Thank you. Four people to the front.
Now I'm looking down at her.
Mascara.
Well, in Hollywood, what they do is they just go from west. Hopefully, you just take a whole bunch.
So, at this time, we're just going to take a five-minute break, then everyone be cool and congratulate each other, and then we'll be back in five minutes. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Thank you, Mr. Novak, and Mr. Schultz, Special Reports and Correspondence.
We have the minutes for the May 20th, 2025 Executive Session and the May 20th Regular Board Meeting.
I move that we approve the May 20th Workshop Regular Meeting Minutes and the May 20th Executive Session Meeting Minutes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? President's Report, that would be me. So, just a couple of things. First off, a lot of people have been asking me questions about running for the board, so I just wanted to give a little bit of an overview for anyone who is interested. You can download the application from the Passaic County Elections website or the NJSBA website, which is the New Jersey School Boards Association website. You need to fill out the form and get twenty-five signatures. You need to then get it notarized, and then you need to submit it in person to the Passaic County Clerk's Office on or before July 28th. The election is scheduled for November 4th, so I just wanted to put that out there. I've been getting a lot of questions on the process and how to do that. Another thing, I just want to acknowledge and congratulate Mr. Sitovic, who was, received the certification of Master Board Member just recently at the Passaic County School Boards Meeting, and Mrs. Dwyer, who received her tenure award for serving on the West Milford Board of Education. So, just wanted to acknowledge and congratulate you both. And we're wrapping up the school year. It's been another great school year. It's been a year of change with our new superintendent. Tomorrow night, we have Macabean Promotion. Thursday night, we have high school graduation. Let's hope for some good weather. I know it's questionable, but it would be great if those thunderstorms decided to visit us maybe Friday instead of Thursday, so that we can have that outside. So, I just wanted to thank everyone, the district, the staff, everyone who's played a part in this school year. I hope you get to spend some quality time with your families, get some much-needed rest and relaxation, and look forward to seeing you back in September, or for the ones that are obviously working through the summer, I hope you get to still spend some time with your families and get to rest also. And that's the end of my report. Mrs. Lockwood, I would just like to acknowledge that you also received an award at the Passaic County School. No, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Van Dyke. Okay, so. Didn't think it was appropriate for to acknowledge and congratulate myself.
You would like to give the photo credit. Photo credit porn.
So, we will move on to Public Comments, which is the first public comment, which is on agenda items only. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
Move to close Public Comments.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, we do have some changes to the agenda, which are all listed on the Board Docs. So, if I could have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Education, Mr. Sitovic.
I would like to move Items 12.2 to 12.18 under Education. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lippett.
Put Mr. Novak on the hot seat here. I just want to talk maybe a little bit about the dual enrollment thing, so people understand a little bit what that's all about, and how we're going to be able to hopefully save some of our students and their families quite a bit of money when that goes on.
Sure. Be happy to explain it. So, we've been, we have a number of courses at the high school that are already considered dual enrollment. For those unaware of the phrase, dual enrollment means that a student takes a high school course, but that course runs concurrently with an approved institution. So, for example, in our tomorrow's teachers program, we have a course credit that they receive as a high school student, and then they also receive credits that are granted on behalf of the institution that we have that affiliation with, and that's Rider University. So, we have a number of dual enrollment courses throughout our catalog that are with a variety of different institutions. The good thing about the dual enrollment credits, although they are granted by Rider or Passaic County Community College or William Patterson, they are typically transferable, especially within the state of New Jersey, and then also transferable outside of the state if the course matches with the core syllabus in that school is. So, you know, for example, these three courses that we are accepting with the articulation agreement with Passaic County Community College, these are part of our Computer Science Pathway. So, we've been talking all year about the Highlander Pathways that we just launched for the high school, and now, after this agreement, our students who were accepted into that program, now three of their four core classes are going to be bearing four credits each. So, students who complete that pathway will not only get the, you know, that industry-recognized credential that we talked about, like, you know, Amazon Web Services Certificate or CompTIA Networking or one of those types of awards, they're also going to walk away with twelve credits that are in association with Passaic County Community College. With our county, you know, a relationship in Passaic County with our county school is advantageous, because they offer us a number of programs that we wouldn't be able to get if we affiliated with Morris County Community or Bergen County Community, where a lot of our students do go. So, the relationship with Passaic is important. When you get credits, dual enrollment credits, from, you know, West Milford High School, and then also have the dual enrollment with Passaic County Community, those credits transfer anywhere in the state. So, all of our state schools will accept. So all of our state schools will accept the county credits that come from that. To have them accepted by four-year schools outside of the state, it's a simple task of, you know, the parent or the student with the counselor, you know, reaching out to that university that they want to attend to ask that question and send our core syllabus to that university and just have a determination if they will accept these credits or not. And really, it varies from school to school when you start getting out of state. In the state of New Jersey, they've encouraged, you know, districts to work within their county. So they've begun a number of programs called, one is called the STAR Program, where students can, students can complete their high school coursework at the community college and also, like, receive dual enrollment. They also have in a program called Achieve 30 that I'm looking into first for our involvement, which would allow high school students to graduate with an associate's degree from Passaic County Community College. So it's been, I guess, a great process that myself, Mr. Strians, or Guidance Department have been looking to develop over the years. And, you know, now we finally got a, we finally got a connection with this articulation agreement. So now, in the short term, I believe we can get far more courses approved for dual enrollment through Passaic County Community College that will benefit our kids, especially for staying in state. And I'm waiting for the data from our end-of-year senior survey. Did you fill it out? First one, probably. So the end-of-year senior survey asks for students' post-secondary plans so that we can then pull data, you know, where they're going to school, if they're going on to the military, if they're going right to the workforce. So from that, I'm going to, you know, I'll prepare that for the next education committee to let you know how many, percentage of our students who actually attend, you know, community colleges or in-state schools, so you can see, like, what the rate of transfer would be for those credits. It's pretty high. It's pretty high for our students who move on to college. The eventual goal is the interaction for all of our pathways to have a large percentage of those core classes to have dual enrollment. So the requirement for the CTE process, the CTE application, you need one dual enrollment course in order to be eligible. So now in our computer science program, we have three. We have another, we have a fourth, our Java course is under review, and I think we just need to do a few tweaks to our curriculum over the summer, and then they'll accept that one as well. So that would put it up to, you know, 16 credits for the students who are going into the computer science pathway. Currently, in our educator preparation pathway, there's a dual enrollment course with our tomorrow's teachers program. How many credit was that? Eight?
I thought it was 10.
10. Yeah, I know it was a large credit bearing because it is a double, it's a double class with the lab. So that's a great, that's a great course. You'll come away with, you know, 10 credits. I'm in the process now with our teacher, Mrs. Schwartz, and Passaic County Community get our child development course dual enrolled as well. So our educator pathway, those students could then come out of there with 14 credits. The broadcast and journalism, we already have a few existing dual enrollment processes with that pathway. And then with our graphic arts, the courses that we offer, they have in their catalog. So it's just a matter of me, you know, going through the process of, you know, getting the details that they need. So I predict by the end of the summer that I could probably have all of our pathways loaded with dual enrollment opportunities while we, you know, while we continue to pursue this. I could talk all, if you have any, want me to stop? I can stop. Any questions?
The 14-credit placement, it's a full semester, probably.
Right, right. And for our students, so a few things happen from it. So we have to share our core syllabus, and then the school determines if there's collaboration. So on our curriculum, curriculum writing, summer curriculum writing, there's Highlander Pathways on there. That's to tweak some of our courses to make sure that they match those dual enrollment opportunities. So we can continue to look at our syllabus, compare, and if there's a few little recommendations, we can adjust and go from there. What was the other part of your question? $68 per credit.
Wow.
So that's, I think that's about a third of what they would pay if they were a graduate and then attending Passaic County Community College. Our teachers become part of their adjunct faculty, and the students who participate in dual enrollment, and that's for any, I think most of our schools, our state schools in particular, Passaic County Community College, William Patterson, if a student completes dual enrollment coursework here, they are automatically accepted into those classes. And again, I mentioned Mrs. Lambert before with On-Site Decision Day, often our students are, if they have a dual enrollment class that they've completed here, like, at On-Site Decision Day, it's like an instant offer.
What Mr. Novak is not sharing with you is the amount of effort he put in personally to this, so I think that's really important to recognize as well. So obviously, we're looking to maximize student opportunities as much as we can, and all these things that we do are obviously a team effort, and there are others that were involved in the discussion, but the driver behind that was Mr. Novak trying to push to make sure that these pathways are as successful as they can be, and our students walk away at the end of their high school career with, you know, a lot of great future opportunities. So thank you, Mr. Novak.
Why are we still using iXL?
So Mrs. Dwyer, which?
12.9.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, 12.0.
It fits a specific need. You know, we have it.
Specifically what need?
Practicing math.
Practicing.
Yes. So like, we've talked about, like, and I understand why you asked the question, so I think it's important for me to share that because there has been, you know, questions about iXL in the past from our parent community. There is a value in iXL. So many districts use it. We have moved away from it. As I said, I call it a controlled abandonment. We used to have it in grades K through 12, and it was being used a lot. We abandoned it in grades K through 5 because the digital tools that we have now with Eureka Math Square and some better tools that we're able to access. As we, so we are now in the process of replacing our math program, math series at the middle school for grades 6, 7, 8, and our seventh grade honors, eighth grade honors classes. That will be, I guess, phasing out of iXL there. There are still some, I guess, courses that like to roster it, and they use it to do, I guess, skills assessment. You can pick at a particular standard and then assign that standard of work.
Is it being graded?
I think it's a completion, it's a completion task. So it does, it is, well, like, so it's like a homework worksheet and those types of things. So it's a classwork grade. And so I think that's a good question, is it being graded? Because I think what led to some of the miscommunication on this over the years was how it was being graded. And iXL in itself expects a student to score a level of 70 to show mastery on a particular skill. When that was first rolled out many years ago, that 70 was then going into a gradebook as a 70, and then students were being expected to hit, you know, that 100 mark, and Megan's nodding because she probably lived through this. So to try to get to 100 in an iXL assessment is challenging because as you, when you get past 70, that 70 shows mastery. When you go beyond 70, the challenge just continues to increase. So we made that adjustment many years ago, but I think there's still some PTSD in, you know, when that was used improperly, and I think sometimes, that's why we hear those, that's why we hear those questions in the community. But I do see value in it for what it's used for.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think too, at the high school level especially, resource. iXL is an important tool for them.
Right. Yeah, middle school as well.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, and it was used in our math foundations classes. Like I said, the ability to pick out a particular standard and practice with it is important. You know, now we have, we have better tools to help identify weak standards. So it used to just be, we had NJSLA that would help us identify a student's weakness in ELA or math. Now with iReady, with our digital resources through Wonders, Eureka, and now Amplify that we're going to put in the middle school, we get standards-based feedback. So then that is, that's a better way for our teachers to pinpoint the standard that they're pulling from iXL. So I think they're using it smarter now just because of the data that we have, we have in the, you know, in our repertoire.
Any other discussion? See in our local, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Sitovic?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
No, on 12.9, yes on everything else.
Mrs. Jergensen?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes. Okay, we have no hand carries for education, so personnel, student affairs, Mrs. Dwyer.
I'd like to move items 14.2 through 14.5, 5-0, along with hand carries, 15.2 and through 15.4.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Dwyer?
I'm concerned about this media situation that we have going on in the high school committee. It's 14.35. How are you, how are teachers expected to handle the databases that kids need to do the research? The second thing is, I know, you know, we talked about them checking in books, checking out books, but who's going to do the ordering? And who's going to be responsible for the purchase order since there's no secretary in there? My biggest concern is the databases, updating them, keeping them available for all the kids. How is that going to work? I can't see eight different teachers doing that.
So we're in the process of working with the high school administration on that. I know Mr. Strians, and I don't want to speak for him, but we sat down with him the other day, and he's got a plan for how that's all going to get worked out. You know, he kind of shared a little bit with us on what the coverage in there will look like, who specifically will be responsible. So again, I don't want to misspeak because ultimately, the high school administration is driving that ship, but I think it is something that we also want to make sure is properly covered, and we want to make sure we're getting appropriately used out of that space, so.
Very important. Is there any chance that next year, when we look at budget, we could consider a media specialist at the high school? Is that ever a possibility?
Certainly, I think, so I don't think any of us wanted to see it go away. I think that the number that we needed to make up to make this year's budget work, you know, unfortunately resulted in some of the retirement positions not getting backfilled in an effort to save the jobs of those who are still remaining here. So certainly not how we wanted things to go. We never like to lose positions, but that's something that we will plan to discuss throughout this upcoming year.
I just want to make sure the kids have access to current data and current research skills.
So that's our entire focus, and that was actually the number one question that Mr. Novak and I asked when we sat down with the high school admin team was to say, you know, based on how we're able to structure things, what will we be missing that we currently have or have had in the past, and how do we make sure we offset those needs? So that's our, we share your concern, and we are trying to make sure we're doing the best we can to limit the impact with the hope that something like that could return in the future, in whatever capacity that looks like.
And I'm sure, I think, by July committees, we'd be able to share exactly what that looks like.
Any other discussion? See in our local, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Sitovic?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jergensen?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
So I am going to abstain from 14.29, 14.31, and 14.50, and yes to the rest.
Thank you. Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes, it's with the recommended abstentions.
And Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes. Okay, and at this time, we'd like to congratulate Mr. Halloy, who's in the audience. Okay. Next, operations and finance, Mr. Lippie.
Too excited. I'd like to move operations finance, 16.1 through 16.31.
Second.
Any discussion?
One question. There's, like football, I think they're going varsity. This is for summer.
What number are you looking at?
Actually, that might have been the last one.
Yeah, that was.
Okay.
Nor by later. I was too excited.
Any other discussion? See in our local, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Sitovic?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jergensen?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
So yes, except for the recommended abstention and 16.28 as well.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes, and the recommended abstention.
And Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes. Okay, policy, Mrs. Markward?
I'd like to move item 18.2 in policy.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Mrs. Markward?
Didn't we add something to the regs at lunchtime?
We did. Is it not listed in there?
No.
Okay.
Does it which?
The regulation.
Okay, so here's what we'll do. Let me just discuss what that change is, and if we can get a motion then to adopt it with that change. So the at lunchtime, at Mackapin School, we wanted to make a distinction between Mackapin and the high school. So we wanted to make sure that while it is permitted at the high school, it is not currently being permitted at Mackapin. So we wanted to make sure that at lunchtime was high school only, and that that could be further restricted by the principal at the high school. So another line at the bottom that says that could be, you know, again, the allowable times during the school day could be further restricted by the principal. So we'll reflect that in the minutes, that that should be in that change, and then if somebody could make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt it with the additive language.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
Good catch.
Any other discussion? Local, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Sitovic?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jergensen?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes. Okay, we have no hand carries for policy. So we'll move on to committee reports and liaisons, which, is there anyone wishing to add anything that's not currently up there? Yes, Mrs. Van Dyke?
I did not have them in yet for the municipal alliance meeting, but I did want to announce, and hopefully the public will get it, the alliance needs members, and they need parent members. I did speak with one of the PTAs today when I was at one of the schools, and I think if we can kind of put that out to our PTAs, they really could use one or two parent members on that committee as liaison so that they kind of meet their grant needs because that's one of the needs that are in the grant. It's one meeting a month, it's the second Monday of the month, and it's, they meet at the township library. So if anyone is interested, they can reach out to myself or to Mrs. O'Brien, or just send me off an email and I'll put them in contact with her. So. So, as far as the meeting went, there, they just did a survey, and there, you know, we talked about our heroes and cool kids and the new sidekick program, because that program is one of the ones that are being funded through one of the grants that Mrs. O'Brien wrote. And I, I just want to acknowledge the program itself, the Heroes and Cool Kids did such a great job at the Teacher of the Year Awards. I was overly impressed with the, the way the students engaged all the people in the building, and their tour of the building, and how they, they interacted. I don't believe there's another school in, in Passaic County that does our program. I think that's what Mrs. O'Brien was saying. So, our program is a model for, for other districts, and honestly, this new sidekick program is definitely another one of them. So, kudos to, to the schools for what they're doing, and also to the alliance for their contributions to this district, for our educational, for our kids. It's just, you know, we, this is money that we could not afford to put into our budget, but it's helping our students every day. So, I just want to say thank you, and if you're interested, please reach out, because they need help.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Dyke. Anyone else wishing to add anything to committee reports? So, we'll move on to old business. Any old business?
Move to close old business.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? New business? Any new business? Mrs. Jergensen?
I have something to say. So, the end of the year, all the schools are putting on these amazing performances and these special events that they work so hard on all year, and I had the pleasure of attending UGLs to the second grade literacy quilt presentation by the second graders, and the third grade writing picnic, which I think was the first year that this happened, where they shared all their writing pieces during the day with their families, and I just wanted to give a shout out to Mrs. Post, and Mrs. Pappas, and Mrs. Accardi, and Mrs. Harris, and all the students up at UGL for just doing such a great job. So, that's it. It was wonderful.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Move to close new business.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment number two. Anyone wishing to speak? Okay, all right, so I have to hold on.
I think Nate wants to speak.
Yes, he does, so I'm going to, I have to read the...
She has to read the right act.
The right act.
So, all speakers will have five minutes to speak under, until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the registry provided and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerned in public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments.
Can you help the microphone?
I think I got it.
You can use mine if you want.
But more than anything, I don't know if I really need to use the microphone, but hello, everyone, I am Nathan Bedford, Hewitt, New Jersey. I am coming before the Board of Education as a member of the Friends of Long Pond Ironworks, even though I do a lot of other things for the Township and School District, including substitute, a member of the Westmofford 77, district videographer, and a man of many talents and hats. So, as a member of the Friends of Long Pond Ironworks, we have our annual Civil War Weekend coming up this weekend on June 21st, 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Long Pond Ironworks State Park, 1334 Greenwood Lake Turnpike, Hewitt, New Jersey. The admission is $10 for adults, $5 for children. We will have military demonstrations, tours, skirmish at 1:00 p.m., both Saturday and Sunday respectively. And then Saturday night, June 21st, we have a candle lantern tour, same price, admission $10 adults, $5 for children, which includes musical performance by the 6th Regiment New Hampshire Contraband, as well as villagers who are part of a performance by the Westmofford Players, the local theater group. For reservations and information, please call 973-657-1688, or visit our website at longpondironworks.gov. And yes, I am the captain of the Civil War Group and event coordinator for this, so, yeah, I'm pretty busy. But we would love to have you for, if you have an interest in history of the American Civil War, it is very fascinating. In fact, every year, I also do school presentations in uniform for the 8th graders at Macapin, and I talk about the Civil War and the history of the American Civil War, and I do it in 45 minutes. Eat your heart out, professor out of Yale University, hopefully he's not watching this, but he does a whole semester, I break it down in 45 minutes. So, thank you very much, and hope to see you this weekend.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Move to close public comments.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Executive session, Mrs. Dwyer?
Okay, at 8:28, I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of conducting a grievance hearing. The board will also be in executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations, current litigation matters, special education matters, negotiations, HIBs, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege of confidentiality is no longer applicable. The board will be in executive session for approximately 45 minutes. Action will not be taken, and we will adjourn from the executive session.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank yous. So, we will be adjourning from executive session. Thank you.